All right. Regularly scheduled meeting in the Vestavia Hills Board of Education will come to order as soon as Jennifer and Steve finish their time. Jennifer, excuse me?
Excuse me.
Sorry for getting Steve down here now. So, first, first order of business to welcome our new board member. Would you like to say hello?
Hello.
Hello.
Jacqueline.
Glad to have you with us. Mr. Dent was at a special call board meeting. It was his last board meeting. I missed the opportunity to haze him and/or thank him at that meeting, but I'd just like to start this meeting real quick with just a few comments. Say that we appreciate Jerry's 10 years of service to the board, which is, seemed like maybe 20. It was a long stretch. I could not begin to count the number of vehicles he owned during that 10 years. Had to be in excess of maybe 20 or so, but one of my, you know, great joys of being able to serve our students on the board is also to get to know the other board members as well, and it's cool that he's no longer going to be serving if you're with us, but I get to count him as a friend and will continue to stay in touch. So, we're thankful to Jerry for his service and wish he'd been here tonight for some straight-up hazing that I wouldn't have been ready for. So...
Because I'm pretty sure he's not going to watch the video yet.
He is not going to watch it. There's zero chance. In fact, I can say just about anything right now if he's not watching the video yet. First order of business to approve the agenda on the board. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next order of business is to approve the notes from the last minutes from the last meeting administered previously. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. I'm being checked.
You're being checked next. All in favor? Aye. And already you got the approval.
All right, board members, our financial statement is up first.
Good afternoon. I have provided the May 2019 financial statements and check register for your review. I would like to comment on a few items from the May 2019 budget comparison report. Local revenues from property tax collections are at 96% as of May 31 compared to 104% at this time last year. At this point, as of today, we have received 97% of our budgeted amount, and we have three months remaining, so we are on track to collect 100% of our budgeted property tax revenues by year end. And then on the expenditures, it looks like this year we're at 70% as of May 2019 compared to 79% in the prior year per year report. But the reason for the variance from prior year is because we had the purchase of Dolly Ridge Elementary in May of last year, which was 6.7 million. So, when you back this out of total expenditures, we would, last year, we would be at 69% of budget, and we're at 70% now, so we're comparable to the prior year. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled as of May 31, 2019.
And according to the benefit of everybody else, on a dollar-for-dollar basis, how are we doing on our receipts from property taxes? Year over year?
Year over year. Let's see. Hold on. We are really right on track. Last year at this time, we had received 37.58 million, and well, we've received 37.8 million this year, so we're about 750,000 over at this point.
Got it. Which also illustrates the point about it's really more, the percentages is really how we're tracking and not the actual amount received.
Yes.
Awesome. Any questions?
I recommend the board approve the financial statement for May 2019 as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under consent items, I recommend the board approve consent items related to out-of-state, overnight field trips, and athletic events, student transfers for the 1920 school year, and disposal of property.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm most appreciative of the schools beginning to get these in for 1920 school year. That's nice to have way ahead of time, so I appreciate principals to work on that. Under business item A, I recommend the board approve the contract extension with whole program management as submitted.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions, commentary?
No. With the changing timeline of completion of construction at, more especially Berry, but to some extent Gresham, what I wanted to do is keep the continuity of the team together with HPM and Leighton Associates with us, and as bad as I hate to say this, I didn't want to lose Brennan's intellectual capacities to help us finish up the job. He has got a lot of information that's helpful to closing these jobs out for us as owner, and we have really got a great team, and we need Berry to finish in a timely manner. And so, the contract reflects that extension of this period of time we think it'll take to finish up the job.
Questions?
No. We expect a lot, Brian.
That's right. It's all on his shoulders.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, I recommend the board approve change order number one with Tortorelli Construction Incorporated in the amount of $31,322.80 for additions and alterations to Vestavia Hills Elementary and Cava Heights. Package C, new parking and access drive.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions, commentary?
Change order, specifics.
Yeah, the large, the bulk of this project was work back behind Cava Heights where deliveries are made, so the clay base and then the asphalt load.
This is the final change order for this contract as it's substantially completed this time.
Wait, did you get that? And this was expected. I mean, we knew this was had to be done, so it's not a change order in essence like a lot of people think, so...
Yeah, it's, it is at its go, but it is an improvement back there in the rear of the school that's been deteriorating for some time.
Right, and some of this change was in scope that we ordered based on some issues with rain and timing of when we could get the asphalt down. We reached a point in the spring where we had to make a call on where we're going to finish the job or not because the rain was just killing us, so that reflects in some changes we made to the final surface.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, I recommend the board approve change order number nine with Blalock Building Company Incorporated in the amount of $55,524.70 for renovations for a new middle school. Package B, building addition and renovations.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Commentary, questions?
The large portion of this change order has to do with a particular courtyard area on the campus, and you're going to have to help me with the building numbers.
It's building C.
Building C, there's a portion of that that's underground, and there was a significant problem with rain, water getting into that area. The only way to do that is to button up the courtyard with concrete, and we explored a myriad of options to try to get to this, and this is the best resolution we have. But if we don't put the concrete in that courtyard, unfortunately, we can't make that courtyard as environmentally pleasing as we wanted, but if we don't stop that water, we'll end up with a problem in that building, so...
Well, unintentional sort of...
Yes, we will. And that'll be another learning experience.
We didn't approve any water features.
No, no. Not in this project.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Item D, I recommend the board approve the painting contract between Johnny Hamilton Painting and the board in the amount of $49,680.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions?
That's over a lot of campuses. It is, but it's primarily, it's primarily Dolly Ridge. We're working just things that, as we've gotten into the building, that we know we need to do to make sure we've got aesthetic soil. We want them open in schools. So, a large part of this is Dolly Ridge.
Does this include a mural of Dr. Ernold or anything?
It will.
Keep on the shrub.
That's good. So, Dr. Ernold was not involved in the selection of these colors, man.
Glory.
That's good. Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Item E, I recommend the board approve the parent-student handbook as submitted.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Board members, I'd like to ask Dr. Ernold to make some comments about the parent-student handbook, which has been referred to in years past as code of conduct, and that's a required document that you passed prior to the start of the school year.
The purpose in drafting this product was to provide consistency among the schools. It also is customer-friendly to our families to have one document to go to if you have students in multiple schools, if you have one in East that visits in the high school, you just have to go to one place now instead of three different places to find this document. Also, we want it to be current, updated, and professional, so it had been a while since it had been updated, and so we took that on. And the process that we used to come to the product today was we had individual conversations at schools, we had assistant principal meetings, principal meetings, district administrators all gave their input and participated in revisions of the product that you have before each day. There are two major things that I would like to draw your attention to, and one of those is our dress code. We took all the dress codes from all the schools, and we together, again, the assistant principals, principals, and district administrators, and crafted one dress code for the district. So, again, you don't have to look at each different school to find the dress code for that particular school. We have one dress code that's published in here that's for K-5, and then the dress code. And then the other significant change is the attendance procedure, and it is aligned to the Alabama Compensatory Attendance Law, also with our state and federal accountability for chronic absenteeism, and so we have limited the number of excused absences for parents and principal pre-approved absences to 10.
What was it previously?
Principal's discretion.
Helps the principals, I think, in that they don't have to make that determination. The board approves that this is the way it is back in line.
After 10 goes unexcused? Yes. Unless it's a doctor, unless it's one of those...
Yes, it's the regular.
Yes, in the state of Tennessee.
Any questions? All in favor?
Item F, it's a document that's revisions to policy 5.18 as it relates to drug and alcohol testing for safety-sensitive employees. This is going to sit on the table until our next regularly scheduled meeting, but Dr. Martin, I would like for you to point out any significant changes or updates to this document.
Sure, sure. This is a document that's been provided to the board. The changes are noted here in the proposed policy, but I work closely with the Director of Personnel to bring policy more in line with practice. We also got input from legal counsel in terms of what changes need to be made, so... But I've noted all of the changes here in the document.
No extra required.
At this time, okay. Item seven in the personnel, I recommend the board approve the personnel actions as submitted.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding personnel. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
I may take a point of personal privilege and congratulate Jennifer Bailey. She's just been appointed the Director of Student Services, has been program specialist in curriculum and instruction for the last three years, now takes that position. Congratulations. All right, glad to have you in that role.
All right. Next, we will call for Susan Salter, who's going to bring in superintendent evaluation results.
AASV appreciates the opportunity to work with you on both the superintendent and the CSFO evaluation. It is, it reflects a stellar performance on the part of the folks in both positions. Just for the benefit of the rest of the board and for your audience, AASV's process is to do this online through questionnaires, and then we had a conference call this morning with the superintendent, the CSFO, and the board president and vice president to review the results. We believe very strongly that that's a professional courtesy that no one should hear the results of their evaluation in public for the first time, so we've gone over them in great detail. It took an hour and 35 minutes-ish this morning. I do not intend to go that long now, you'll be happy to know. I am going to move through it at a decent clip, but please don't let that stop you from asking questions if I, or asking if I need to slow down, just let me know. Just as a reminder, I'm going to start with the superintendent's evaluation. As a reminder, all five board members were invited to participate and did. Fifteen of the 16 direct reports who were invited chose to participate, and then we had 31 stakeholders who were asked to participate, and of that, 23 did, which is a great response at any time of the year, and frankly, in the late May, early June timeframe where this was done, an extraordinary response rate. Stakeholders that were invited included advisory council members, mayor council, university representative, UNICIR director, PTO, or PTA president of each of the schools, I believe. So, you had a good, these were people who were chosen because they were in positions where they were likely to have observed the superintendent's performance rather than just simply cherry-picking actively involved folks, so you've got a good representative sampling. Just a quick reminder of the rating scale. It is a five-point scale. The target is anything at three or higher. Three is meets expectations, and on a lot of school systems, there is a sort of a preconceived idea that everybody is a five. AASV doesn't subscribe to that, and when we train boards, we say that, you know, nobody's a rock star in every category. Having said that, you have two rock stars in your midst. These are very high scores, and so what I'm going to do is break them down. The board, the board's instrument for the superintendent is extensive. It's 10 categories. It is a total of about, I believe it's 47 indicators, maybe more than that. What I want to show you first is the big picture because he works for you collectively, and it matters that the board speak with one voice, and that's what you see on the screen now. His scores, when you aggregate everything that the board said, range from a low of 4.1, which is just above exceeds expectations, to a high of 4.9, which is demonstrates excellence. Overall, the board rated his performance at a 4.6, midway between exceeds expectations and demonstrates excellence. And just to sort of give you the big picture, what emerged in the input from the board was a, the board views this superintendent as intelligent, thoughtful, deliberate, highly organized, a planner, somebody who's committed to transparency, a team player, somebody who is well-read, collaborative, who considers all his options, communicates those, and listens to feedback and input, and then considers that input before making decisions, and somebody who has systematically elevated the skill set of his central office staff. As you see, all of the categories averaged above a meets expectations. There were no scores that were in the needs improvement category whatsoever. Normally, I would tell you at this point, the areas for potential growth, there are not any highlighted at this point. As I said, nobody's a rock star in every category, but what you have is a strong, solid performance from your superintendent, and the areas that a board member randomly might have scored a three still were at the meets expectations level. So, I'm just quickly going to unpack this. This is the same data as you saw in the previous chart, just disaggregated so that you can see how the board members rated it. We always break it down like this so that you can see if a score averaged what it did because the board was pretty much in agreement, or if there's wide disparity and this is just the average that I'm presenting you. And what you see there is the board consistently is pleased with the superintendent's performance. Looking at these categories, you see the first item here is unanimous. There are a number of unanimous answers across this instrument. That is highly unusual. In the eight or 10 years we've been doing these evaluations, the unanimous answers have gotten very few and far between, but there are a number of places where this board is in full agreement that the superintendent is scoring at a particular level. On his work as CEO of the school board, he scored a 4.7, which was one of his highest scores. The board reported that it is pleased with the way he works to keep them updated, including videos, that he is highly organized and very deliberate and consistent in his thinking and actions. Looking at his educational leadership of the school, again, schools, again, you see multiple categories where the board is in agreement completely that he is a strong decision-maker, has excellent problem-solving skills, and that he collaborates well with others. I will point out, and I don't think I can make the pointer work from here, but in that first item, provides supervision and evaluation and professional growth for your staff, you'll see that there's a gap. One board member indicated on that item that they didn't have enough information to rate it. That was not counted against him in the score. It was simply averaged by the other four board members' responses. Again, I'm not going to go through all of the details, but board members indicated that his problem-solving skills are superb, that he is masterful at considering options before executing a plan, and that he has worked hard to elevate and empower his staff. Looking at personnel management, again, his leadership skills of the staff are clearly a strong suit, and he has developed an organizational structure that is working well for this board. In particular, his work with the reorganization of, at the elementary level, was done particularly well. Community relations was his highest score at a 4.9, just barely below the possible on this. Again, it is clear that the board feels that he's well-respected and trusted in the community, that he has a real talent for remembering when he has met and spoken to people and being able to recall what that was about, and that that has gone a long way toward building a connection with the community. In the area of management of pupil personnel services, the board rated his performance at a 4.3. Again, in particular noting that he has a particular strength in taking a long, hard look at systems and processes and things that are in place, and being able to see the gaps and come up with plans to address them. Looking at communication and interpersonal skills, I've already addressed the communication skills and his ability to work with others. That now was a 4.8 overall score from the board. Looking at professional development, again, you see, again, the possible from all board members in his efforts to provide accurate data to you and also to your, the community agencies that you work with, and the leadership role he has taken in improving education in the system, and that overall this category was a 4.8. Looking at his role in technology management, this is a 4.1, and it is his lowest score, but I'm reluctant to point that out because it is still exceeds expectations, and as you see, there were no scores in this one that were below meets expectations. Looking at facilities management, again, a 4.7. There's been a lot of work done on facilities in this system over the year that he has been in place, and it appears that the board believes he's done an exemplary job of managing all the various aspects of that, and has got long and term, long and short-term plans in place, and that this is one of his strengths. And looking at financial management, which is the last category from the board, he received a 4.5 for his ability to make the hard decisions where it came to construction and other issues, and his fiscal responsibility in leading this school system. All right, I've run through that really quickly. Are there any questions at this point? All right, I'm going to move on then. As I mentioned before, you opted to include his direct reports. These would be your central office administrators and your building-level principals. They completed an instrument that had about 30 indicators and rated his performance at a 4.7, which is on the high end of exceeds expectations. Overall, your administrators see the same strengths as the board did. A strategic thinker, a planner, an excellent communicator, some strong interpersonal skills, somebody who shows that he values everyone and is collaborative and uses data effectively. Looking at the overall results, let me say, in this one, they were not categorized the way they were for the board, so these are simply in the order that they fell in the questionnaire. But again, you see that ranging from keeping your administrators informed about matters that are pertinent to them, giving them an opportunity to provide input on system matters that impact them, and resolving conflict when it occurs, all of these were, we use the first three bars that you see, were well above exceeds expectations. And I point those three out specifically because when you look at what it takes to generate job satisfaction, to give employees a sense of efficacy in their jobs, these are three of the points that impact employees' satisfaction and happiness in their position, and you see that they feel like the leader is exceeding their expectations in these areas. Looking at the next set, there were two high scores in this that were among his highest from his direct reports. The second bar, which is including his administrators, teachers, and staff in the decision-making process, and also being a positive person who maintains his composure in difficult situations, and both of these were just below the maximum at 4.9. In the next category, or the next chart, he received a 4.9 also for his work to seek resources, financial and otherwise, for the system. But you see, again, the second item is just below that at a 4.8 for setting high standards for performance, really all the way across the system, administrators, staff, and students. Looking at the next set of charts, you see his absolute highest score is right there in the middle for his knowledge of the laws and policies that govern schools and school systems, and then just below that, the next two items for actively leading implementation, development and implementation of policies and procedures to the system and promoting the system's mission and vision. In this next chart, you see, again, right in the middle, a high score of 4.9 for manages the financial responsibilities well, but all of these are at 4.5 or above, and again, they range from promoting the use of technology across the system to using a variety of data to make decisions. Looking at this next chart, again, the one on the far right-hand end, performing duties in a professional manner, his administrators rated him at a 4.9, and for the item right in the middle, a 4.8 for meeting with individuals and groups in an atmosphere that is open, honest, mutually respectful, which probably then speaks to your stakeholder results. Your stakeholders rated his performance at a 4.6. As I mentioned, we invited 31 to participate, 23 opted to. They had a much shorter instrument because obviously they don't have the kind of day-to-day contact that you do and your administrators do, so they had a 14-question instrument to complete. But again, a 4.6 overall, I'll just hit some of the high points. Their scores ranged from a 4.3 to a 4.7, so above meets expectations and sort of running on either side of midway between exceeds expectations and demonstrates excellence. Couple of the higher ones that I'll point out, he's established effective communication processes, that's the second column, at a 4.7, and communicates the system mission and vision to staff, students, and community. The lowest item on this chart is still a 4.3, and that is uses social media effectively in his community relations. Looking at the next chart, the two high points here are problem-solving and demonstrating excellence. Those are the second and third items. But again, also recognized at a 4.5. But again, also recognized at a 4.5 in that first column for serving as an effective liaison between the school system and the community agencies. In this next group, again, all of these were at 4.6, having to do with maintaining health and safety of the students, ensuring proper maintenance of your facilities, and leading technology both to deliver the services of the system as well as the academics of the system. So, to wrap it up, overall, there was incredible consistency among the participants in the superintendent's evaluation, the board, and stakeholders rated him at a 4.6 and direct reports at a 4.7. So you might ask what needs to be done next. At this point, I would strongly encourage that you continue to have the ongoing conversations and feedback that you're already providing, so that he is knowledgeable of where this board is pleased with his work and where the board might like to see changes going forward, and that you discuss goals for the year. As we discussed in the conference call, the superintendent has a plan already in place for the presentation of goals to this board, and so I will leave that to y'all, but if there is anything that we can do to assist in that, we are happy to do so. Mr. President, would you prefer, I move right on to the CSFO, or would you like to make a comment?
No, let me just see, I'd like to make a comment that I made on the readout this morning is that, you know, well, this one I didn't make, but I'll make yours, that we felt strongly that Dr. Freeman was a great candidate when we selected him, and it's nice to see that our confidence in him is bearing out, both with us and with the direct reports and the stakeholders. Then secondly, is, you know, you might tend to think, well, he hasn't been here long enough to really irritate all of people and have, you know, have some of the varying responses or whatever, but I would kind of look at that the reverse way in that he stepped in this scenario, we've had a ton of change. We've had a ton, you know, we've told people that their kids are going to different schools, we've redistricted things. We said, by the way, these teachers are going to this place, and these teachers are going to that place, and all that kind of stuff. And so if there was ever a time for people to have a sense of frustration with things and have the opportunity in an anonymous format to vent that online, this was it, and we did get those results. So as a matter of fact, for me at least, I would view those as, you know, even better than they appear, given all the change that we have had, you know, come through the school system. So the fact that we have that amount of change and you get good results is, you know, really meaningful to me and speaks very well of your leadership. Board members, shall I have other things I'd like to say or ask questions of Susan?
I think it's interesting that what we've seen feedback here through the various entities is exactly what we heard during the interview process. Sitting down in Auburn, we were being told many of these things that you just presented. And, you know, one of the things was he builds a strong team, and he is, you know, again, he didn't just get to step in, let's just, y'all do your day-to-day thing. He's had to juggle so many different projects and things that the system hasn't had to deal with in many years, and to be able to continue that, and you guys keep the education at the level that it is and is expected, as well as building the team and bringing in new team members and everything, I think it's just, I think you've done a very good job, and very, very proud to call you our superintendent.
I would agree. I mean, one of the things I talked about this morning is I just feel that you have been a very stabilizing force throughout the system, coming into all these changes, where you would expect things to drop, and you would expect to have some lead-in time and all of that stuff, and I don't feel like this is a reflection of a honeymoon period. I think this is just who you are, and, you know, we're very fortunate to have you.
Yeah, I agree. And I know you love this attention.
We're gonna do all the things we'd like about Lisa then, too.
One of the things I hear most common is, I've spoken to Dr. Freeman, from people in the community, I've spoken to Dr. Freeman, I've never spoken to a superintendent before. You listen, you go out of your way to find people in our community, parents, community members, it doesn't matter, I mean, they'll say, I saw him out to eat at Mo's Barbecue, and he talked to me, he knew my name. That goes a long way in communities like this, and it does not go unnoticed when you know people, you're in the community, you're here all the time, and you're an active part of it, and it goes a long way to the trust and the building the successful system and continuing what we have, so thank you.
And on the graph where it's broken down into different colors, Jerry was the low bar.
Yeah, in fact, I was fully expecting four out of five board members responding to that. He had set sail. Anything else? All right, now Courtney gets her turn in the hot seat.
Yeah. And while he's pulling that up, I'll give you just a little bit of background. For the benefit of our newest board member, you may know this already, but the CSFO position is a little different than the superintendent in that the board appoints her, but in consultation with the superintendent, so there's, and the law makes the superintendent her day-to-day supervisor. So this evaluation is always done by the board and the superintendent, both. And so those are the two entities that participated, and all the members of the board did, and using the exact rating scale. So this one is not categorized either, so I'm gonna run through it in much the same way that I did the direct report item, starting with the board. There were 21 indicators on which the board rated Courtney's performance, and they rated her a 4.6 overall, very consistent across the board, and very similar performance to the superintendent's. This, back up. This, you can see the results for the first five indicators disaggregated by board members. I would point out that one of the highest scores that she received overall was a 4.8, and it's that set of indicators, or bars right in the middle, for provides the board with its, with the required information that it needs, but you see, just to that, the left of that, that she's also providing the board with the financial statements, should show the system's status in a way that the board can manage and understand. What we saw in looking at the results overall is the board feels that she is knowledgeable, professional, that she's done an excellent job of modernizing the finances of the system and the department, the processes in place, that she provides this board with clear, detailed information, and has been an asset to the central office. There, again, were no areas where she was marked as needs improvement. It is a strong performance, and one, as with the superintendent, one of the strongest that I have seen in my time doing this. Looking at the next set of charts, she received a 4.7 for informing the board of any non-compliance issues that might arise under the Fiscal Accountability Act. There's certain things, if they come up, she's required to notify you. There are two board members who skipped that one, who indicated that they didn't have enough information, but again, that did not count against her. The board also rated her highly for providing accurate information in a timely manner, which is the next to the last set of bars, and for presenting, as I already mentioned, the information in a clear, concise, and uniform way, at a 4.6. Looking at the next set, again, you see all very high numbers ranging from 4.5 to 4.6 across the indicators, and most of these have to do with required reporting at the state level, getting things in on a timely manner, and getting them in accurately and in the format required. Looking at the next set, two of her highest scores are in those last two items, maintaining strict confidentiality in all areas of her responsibility, and being loyal to the system objectives. Both of those at a 4.8. One of the reasons that the loyalty to the system's goals and objectives is included is that sometimes you will hear boards or administrators complain that when somebody has a goal that they're supposed to accomplish for the system, the CSFO bucks them on it and acts as if the money was coming out of her own personal checking account. You do not find that kind of feedback in this, whether a partner in the efforts to accomplish the system's goals. Moving on to the results from the superintendent, the superintendent had 43 indicators, which is significantly more than the board, but again, he's her day-to-day supervisor and works with her in ways that the board would not. Overall, the superintendent rated her performance at a 3.9, which is just on the cusp of exceeds expectations. And again, these are not categorized, and I'm just gonna hit a few high points. The two high ones at the end of this chart, prepares and maintains the records financially and in compliance with state reporting standards, were both at demonstrates excellence. The low score here was a 3 for meets expectations in demonstrating a clear understanding of the duties and responsibilities of her job, and I think that reflects that it's been your first year in the process, and there's been a little bit of a learning curve. Looking at the next set of charts, clearly his strength is providing information and data to the superintendent in a timely manner, and again, in a clear, concise, and uniform way. He also rated her highly in her planning and organizational skills, her ability to prioritize, and her work to continuously analyze the budget and look for areas where there could be issues. In this next set, these were primarily exceeds expectations in areas like taking the lead to analyze the activities of her department and the services and address them, and being progressive and open to change. You'll see that there is one bar missing, and that was where the superintendent, I believe you said, didn't have enough information to rate that one, or hadn't seen this specific set of skills about using the technology.
I feel like I just overlooked it, frankly.
That is also a possibility.
We'll go back to this.
It did not count against you, and with this many indicators, that certainly happens.
Does not get a gold star, and it's a thoroughly read.
Well-read, but perhaps not every detail. In this set of items, this strength reflected is the ability to develop and establish and then monitor internal financial controls that are used by the staff. That was a 5.0, demonstrates excellence, but also high ratings for keeping the community informed about the system's business financially and effectively coordinating with the board and superintendent so that processes are fair and open to the public. There were threes for communicating with department heads in the budget and planning process, and working with the principals to ensure policies and practices are understood and in place, and I believe that these are a reflection that she's, that that has not always been done by people in this position. Looking at this next set, all of these are at meets expectations, ranging from setting goals for the department and communicating them clearly to her staff, training, leading training to ensure that business officials in the schools understand how the work is to be done, and helping her employees develop their own skills. All of these are at meets expectations. Looking at the next set of ratings, the two strengths here are, again, going back to financial reporting that's required, getting it done in a timely manner, and getting receipts and expenditures posted in a timely manner. The next item, a strength is clearly preparing the required monthly budget versus actual understanding what this board expects in terms of the information that is provided to it, making sure she meets SDE deadlines, and then under her leadership, making sure that you consistently get audits that have no, that are, you get an unqualified audit, that's harder to say than you think if you're not in the financial world. And then this next set of charts, again, a lot of this has to do with required reporting, but I will point out, the superintendent rated her exceeds expectations in projecting a professional image and being a solid representative of this school system and board, reflecting a positive attitude, and keeping her composure in difficult situations, and maintaining a firm commitment to the standards of performance in all aspects of her duties. And then finally, exceeds expectations in maintaining confidentiality, being loyal to the system's goals, and exhibiting professional maturity in all aspects. So again, you see that the board rated her at a 4.6 and the superintendent at a 3.9, not quite as tightly close together as with the superintendent's evaluation, but still excellent ratings, and both exceeding expectations. So again, as with the superintendent, the next step is to continue the conversation and ensure that she receives feedback, get a give that any board feels like something about the performance needs to change. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Those of us who grew up and were part of a PEPY evaluation system, some of y'all will remember that.
Effort runs.
Yeah, it's a five-point rating for the work that teachers did, administrators, and so forth. Oftentimes, when someone is marked at three in those categories of meets expectations, the first thing you do is, what did I do wrong? What we've all done, and something I explained to, during the conversation this morning for Ms. Brown, is quite frankly, when somebody comes into a chief school finance officer of over $100 million budget in their first year and meets expectations, I think that is quite admirable, and that's literally what happened, and came in really to try to get a budget developed in time to bring to you for this last fiscal year. And so, as I said in my statements to our just comments, there really are no areas for improvement. These, to me, are quite remarkable for a first-year CSFO to accomplish, and so I think context about that is important, to know that that actually is right on target, I think. And in fact, there are a lot of pieces of work that Ms. Brown has been doing to what I would say modernized the department, that kind of go behind the scenes and are yet to sort of be rolled out, that are additional steps and what I think are very proactive moves, and creating a greater ownership of the budgeting process and making sure we're compliant in all aspects. So all in all, just a really fantastic job.
We appreciate the chance to work with you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Y'all have a lovely rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks for not going an hour and a half tonight.
You are more than that.
Appreciate that.
Even without Jerry Dent, I think that that would not be a wise enough.
I didn't throw anything at you like Jerry did. All right, that brings us to the public comment portion. If you'd like to make a public comment, please leave them in at two things on the agenda and state your name and address, and keep it to three minutes. All right, I understand that Dr. Freeman likes to make some comments.
Yeah, one thing I want to say in regards to evaluation, my appreciation for participation, but it would be cliche, I think, in some respects to say that because those evaluation ratings were very nice, it's because of all the other people that do all the work, but it's not cliche when I say it. I get to work with what I think is the best of the best leadership that sits in this room across from us now, that really do the work of the school, and it's my privilege to get to benefit from the grassroots that takes place, both at the central office level and the principals. These really are impactful leaders, and we are so blessed, and I count that a privilege, not only as a superintendent, but as a parent, to know that my boys will get to benefit from the leadership that this team brings to us. And we are today, I'm going to bid adieu to one of the great ones in this group. Chain Marie started, like me, several years ago in education, and in the last several years has operated in assistant superintendent capacity for this office, and really one of the first people I interacted with when I took the position, and so somewhat of, I would say, an induction or onboarding process that And so somewhat of, I would say, an induction or onboarding process that she helped me with to get up to speed with all things going on, which were there was a litany of things we had to tackle. But we had to make some what I think were critical decisions organizationally in the first couple of months and Jane Marie sat beside me to do some of the more difficult things that we did to, to arrive to some points where we are today. And so she is retiring effective at the end of this month, it's her last board meeting and I will tell you without question, Jane Marie is one of the smartest, most intellectual at a high-level person I've ever worked with in education. She is a master teacher. I've watched her do professional development. It is truly, well, Marzano writes the book about the art and science of teaching, the science part is back, back of hand for most people, it's the art part of being able to teach and instruct and that's what she is so good at. And so we will miss that skill set. There is, I'm certain much opportunity that lay ahead for Jane Marie because she is gifted as a teacher and has performed so well in that duty. I most appreciate it, we've had to, I deal with a lot of things this year and she's walked beside me and handled things in such a professional manner, I appreciate that. I wish you all the very best and, and I do thank you for well over a hundred percent of what you've given to this organization.
He's been pretty much.
Yeah.
Yeah, just let us second that. I mean, you're constantly professional as always and, you know, old-school debate, people gotta hang together and, you know, we, you've got married on the same day in different churches and same cities.
Not one another.
Do I? Not one another. I know, I may not know many of you, but I know that would not work. Two debaters should not be married. It's best to have an Andrew and an Allison in that, in that mix, but we've really enjoyed working with you and hope you take some fun time in retirement. Go to lots of cool coffee shops and places that you enjoy to go visit, but we appreciate all that you've done for our schools and you've served us well. Any other comments? All right, you're being known, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.